I'm gonna go ahead and start recording now, since it is six sixteen. The, our first interviewee, Mr. Gunderson, I don't see is on yet, though.
Yeah. I did state to the entire council that we had at six fifteen, and it really bugs me.
You, you did make it very clear.
No. I hear that.
Someone cruising down First Street.
Yeah.
I thought it almost sounded like a stomach growling. It might be mine. I haven't eaten dinner yet, so I'll try to keep muted.
Alright, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call this council special session to order. It is Wednesday, March third. The time is six eighteen P M. We are waiting for our first applicant to show.
See, Mr. Gunderson is now here.
Okay. Mr. Gunderson, if you'd like to go ahead and unmute yourself.
And I have Doug Martin coming on board.
I am unmuted.
Alright. Well, thank you for applying for our budget committee, Mark, and we gave you two questions. If you want to go ahead and just answer those, that'd be great.
I don't think I got the two questions either.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's okay. They were included in the email, but there are two easy questions. First question is just introducing yourself to the city council and why you want to join the budget committee. And then the second question, which I can repeat later on, is just what will your goals be as a budget committee member?
Okay, well, my name is Mark Gunderson. What was the whole question?
First question is just introducing yourself and why you would like to join the budget committee.
Well, so like I said, my name is Mark Gunderson. I have always wanted to be involved with, with, you know, things out in the, like, I've always been involved in my kids' sports and things like that, and they've gotten older, and so I wanted to find something else to do with my time. I enjoy working with the public. I enjoy working with, you know, in collaborative teams, so to speak, and I would just like to be a part of the process, the whole political process, and how things work with the council. And just, you know, be, be, be a part of the, the solution, you know, just help out and, and hopefully come with a different perspective and, 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 you know, just, you know, give my two cents and what I think and be able to work with the rest of the committee members to, you know, make things work.
And the second question was, Mark, what would be your goals as the budget committee member?
Um, well, since I haven't done it before, just to get a good understanding of what's going on, you know, we're collaboratively, collaboratively with both the city council and the other committee members and, you know, work to, you know, better, better the situation, you know, just, boy, you know, I don't have an agenda, so it's not like I'm coming in, I'm coming in kind of as a, just your typical citizen who wants to be part of the process, and so I'm a pretty good team player. That's what I've always been told, and, you know, I just, I would like to, you know, be a part of the process, like I said.
Alright, thank you, Mark. Mayor, I'm not sure if you or any of the counselors have any other questions.
Um, you know, I'd kind of like to keep it neutral and just be fair to everybody, same questions, yeah.
We'll just stick with those two questions.
Yeah, I think that's, again, Mark, we appreciate you applying for budget committee.
Yeah.
We, we are gonna deliberate in our regular session, just shortly after seven, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Mayor, what is, even though I, I agree, we should just keep it to the same two questions, is it okay, like, we, if we did have a little bit of time left that if the candidates wanted, they had specific questions or at this time for them to ask some things, or do you just want to leave it with the, the two questions that we were asking?
I just want to leave it probably to the two, just because we are, I, I know that didn't take ten minutes, but it's just kind of fair, because that will open up a dialogue that could run us over.
Yeah, got, got you. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mark. I'll let, let you go. You're happy to, you'll, you are welcome to log on to the evening session and watch the deliberations if you would like, and you can see the recommendation and voting. Otherwise, it will likely be either myself or Cat or City Recorder Kathy Payne giving you a call tomorrow to let you know the results.
Alright, perfect. Thanks for your time, Mark.
Thank, thank you for coming and applying.
Have a great night, guys.
You too.
Mayor, I can bring on the next applicant, which is Jenny Carlson, if you want, unless you want to wait two minutes.
Yeah, let's wait two minutes.
Okay, sounds good.
Hopefully, Councillor Topaz will show up. It's kind of awkward, because in fairness, now Councillor Topaz hasn't heard Mark's statement, so I'm kind of conflicted about that. Him being a vote later.
Not sure if John or Kathy want to weigh in on the thought process if Topaz was not allowed to vote because he missed out on one or two of the four interviews.
I wouldn't think so. I think he should be allowed to vote no matter what, you know. Just, you know, otherwise that opens a can of worms.
Yeah, it's always a challenge when you, one of the council members doesn't get all of the information, but they are voting members of.
But still.
Well, and we did get the, we did receive the applications earlier in the week, so we've kind of, most of us, I would hope, have looked through those and kind of checked people out a little bit, so.
You know, prior to these interviews, we just, it was a counselor's turn, in a sense, to pick someone and nominate someone that they knew in the community or the budget committee, so it's advancing, and I don't think this is too much of a hiccup.
Uh, Mayor, would you like me to turn on Jenny Carlson?
Yep, let's go ahead. Hi, Jenny.
I have weird lighting. Sorry. I'm not used to this location.
That's right. Can you turn up your volume a little bit, maybe? Give me a check, check.
I'm here.
There you go. You're getting louder.
Alright, it might just take to warm up.
That's better.
Alright.
Okay, thank you for applying for our budget committee, Jenny. You're familiar with this. Did you receive the two questions?
I did. I was unsure of their being.
There, there are a couple of simple questions, so Matt, I'm gonna allow you to ask the questions.
I heard the drill.
Yeah.
I heard Matt, and the first time I listened in, I'm just used to logging on at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep.
Old habits die hard, but, um, Jay Carlson, I have served city council, but served on other committees. I volunteered in leadership roles in this community since two thousand eight, doing projects in the park, projects that benefit kids. I want to join the budget committee because I think we can do a better job with transparency and accountability to our citizens, where funds go and where money comes from and what it's spent on, and being accountable to our citizenry, because there's a lot of funding streams that I still don't think people fully understand, and people are, have been pinched in our community financially and need to know that the city is accountable and are good stewards of our dollars. So that's why I wanted to join the budget committee. My goals is just, you know, furthering the city's goals of equity and inclusion for all of our citizens and make sure we're not leaving anybody behind. And that starts with policy and budget, because if we're not allocating resources in a fair way, that's just one more way we leave people out.
Okay. Alright, well, that's the two questions we had, and we've allotted ten minutes, so I apologize for.
Well, you know me, I'm, I'm, I'm person of brief. That's, I, I just kind of get to a point. That's just a point, because I've been through the process, so, and I mean, I have the, I mean, the only person on the screen I don't know is Councillor Chilton. That's the only person that I don't know that I haven't worked with before. I've worked with Councillor Berkeley on the budget committee before. I've worked with him in the community and different projects before. Obviously, I've worked with Councillor Topaz on council and on Shedco. Councillor Morton was a great mentor to me in the past on councils, so I mean, you know, Mayor Shaw, you've helped me out in lots of ways. You know, I miss in-person meetings and just having that social connection. I think our whole community is starved for connection right now. So I just miss that teamwork and that sense of working together, and I think the sooner we get back to face-to-face meetings, the happier our whole town will be.
Yes.
So that's just, I just think the more the city can support those connections, and, you know, we've done a lot of work with connecting CCMH and Community Action Team, and Mayor Shaw, you brought in the Alano Club and connected some of those things. A lot of people are doing complimentary work, like Scapus Bay Watershed, the Soil Conservancy, the Rec Center. A lot of people are doing things that come really close to each other, and when we work together, we can make more with our dollars. You know, instead of everybody doing it separately, if we stand closer together, we can make a more comprehensive plan as a community.
Okay.
So I don't, I, I mean, it's like, this is not our first rodeo together, Mr. Shaw.
No, it looks like, and it looks like you're in your new place.
Yeah, I just moved. I saw boxes everywhere, so I am just, I mean, it's March first, and I gave notice March first, or March first was my official first day here, but I've been, you know, stepping over boxes for a week.
Nice. It looks nice inside there.
Yeah, the kids say they feel like they're in a hotel. And they're going, I don't think our other house was ever this clean. That's what happens with new construction. Nobody's ever, no dog has ever shed on this floor, so. But it's good to see everybody, you know, with the COVID, it's, you know, it's hard to get that connection. I'm the proud participant of two shots, so I'm ready to hug people at will. Yeah, so anyway, you guys have a good evening. Good luck with your deliberations. I look forward to many other things. I had Kathy keep me on the list for the big things, to just try to, you know, help out where I can and help nonprofits where I can and talk to community members and kind of direct them to you guys or appropriate city staff. I've just been so proud of the Public Works Department, seeing them out working on the roads and doing stuff through the storm and things, and just smiles and hello, and can I help you? And it's like, it's just really proud to see our team out there doing such good work, and I just can't say that enough. You know, police officers, I'm seeing them out on, on the patrol every single day. I'm seeing city trucks, and it's really proud time for our community.
Yes, I agree.
So it's just, it's just really nice. I, over there on Lamont, I never saw anybody over here. I feel like I'm on Public Works Freeway. I mean, I am a stone's throw from wastewater treatment plant, so I see a lot. Anyways, but that's just little social. I know we're supposed to hold it to ten minutes, and I was too fast with my answers. But anyways, so, I mean, you guys have a good pool of candidates for the budget committee. It'll be an interesting selection process. You know, we struggle sometimes to fill positions. I did also include on my application, I was interested in parks. I've always been interested in parks. Doug knows that. That's no secret. No secret to Councillor Berkeley either. I'm interested in parks, so I'm, you know, as somebody said to me, you're not going away, you're just gonna wear a different hat, so, you know me and my hats.
That's right.
I do, you know, our community is better when we all work together.
Totally agree.
I'm cancer-free and living in a new house, and I have my weekends to myself now.
You have an accent.
Yeah, I'm a divorced woman on the prowl. Look out, Coop has attacked. Anyway, so you guys have a good night. It's good to see all you guys. Take care and be well.
Alright, Jenny.
See you later.
Yep, thank you. Oh, that is hilarious.
I have it.
Oh, man.
Hey, John, on a side note, we're gonna do deliberations, and then before we go any further after that on our agenda, we're gonna go into our work session where we left off.
Uh, we could do that, or we can just kind of go down the agenda and pick off the, the.
Ones needed.
The ones that are needed. Just be sure to stop for deliberation.
The two, yeah, the two that are needed. So that's what, yeah, the two for sure, yep.
But yeah, as far as report and, yeah, a few other things.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, some of that I could push towards the end, too, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking it was more like, you know, the cities that don't have workshops, they'll go off and just go through each line item as it comes, right? So basically have the workshop at, at, at the meeting and just talk through it. And get the questions answered.
But we got, we got them two together, so I'm gonna go ahead and, yeah, with contract payments, so I'm gonna go ahead and do those two prior to.
And there's one thing I wanted to talk about that on surplus property one, so.
And I have Mr. Gundy coming on right now.
Okay.
Hi, Jeff, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you just fine. Great.
So, Jeff, thank you for applying for budget committee, and I don't know if you received the, the two questions that we are gonna ask.
I did.
Okay.
Yay, somebody did. But, I just want proof that, that's, I did send it out. Yeah.
But we'll just go ahead and allow Matt to ask the question, just because that's what we've been doing so far, so.
Alright. Thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. Grundy, if you can just state who you are and why you wanted to join the budget committee.
Yeah, my name's Jeff Grundy. I just recently moved to St. Helens. I've lived in the metro area since two thousand. I want to help out in my local community. I recently bought a house here, so I'm official now, which is nice.
Welcome.
Yeah, thanks. I love it. Um, yeah, I've lived all over the Portland area, basically all over, um, but I've been out here a bunch. I've got friends that live out here, and we just kind of fell in love with it, so we bought a place, and here I am. Um, yeah, I wanna help out. I want to do my part in my local community and, you know, have, show my civic pride in a way that I can, you know, go about it that way. Um, yeah, I think, I think, um.
Hey, Jeff, we lost your sound.
Yes.
Oh, okay, you're back.
Oh, are we there now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right now. Sorry. Yeah, my phone, my phone started ringing over in the corner, and it must have went to my iPad. Sorry about that.
Anyhow, I don't know where I cut out, but, yeah, I just want to, you know, do my part. Um, you know, in a, you know, you know, make a, in a positive way and whatnot. Um, I've done some work on a, on a nonprofit foundation in the past. Just recently, actually, I just resigned my position over in Hillsborough. I was part of a K-9 foundation for the, to help fund money for the, for the city K-9 PD or the PD Canines. So I enjoyed that, but I'm not living on that side of the hill anymore, so I want to, you know, put my efforts over here, see what I can do, um. Yeah, bring a, you know, help out any way I can.
So Jeff, the second question was just if you, what are your goals as being a part of the budget committee?
Um, I don't have a specific goal. Um, that just sounds, I don't want to make it sound like somebody's not doing good enough job already. Um, yeah, I just want to bring, bring, uh, you know, bring, bring myself and all that I can and, you know, show up, show up prepared and, and go from there. I, I, yeah, I, I thought about that for a while. I just don't think a specific goal is the right thing to add.
Okay. Anything else you wanted to mention to the city council?
Um, not, not really. I don't know really where I can expand upon things. I, um, you know, I mean, I'm just a, you know, regular, regular guy, go, you know, work full-time over in, in Hillsborough, but, yeah.
Okay. Well, we'll leave it at that. I know the city council is gonna deliberate to the evening session. You're welcome to log in and watch that if you would like. But nonetheless, either myself or City Recorder Kathy Payne will give you a call tomorrow and let you know what the deciding vote is.
Awesome. Sounds great.
Alright, thank you, Jeff.
And I, and I just, hey, and I just want to say welcome again to St. Helens, and it is, it is a nice community. It's, it's fun to live here, and I also wanted to, I should have stated this to other Jenny knows this, but, yeah, if you don't happen to be the applicant, you're still welcome at the budget committee meeting to be a spectator on the side and have some public input when those comments do come available beginning of every meeting, so I just want to make that clear. Yes, we're totally transparent here, so.
I'm gonna throw in something, too. If you really need to work, the library board needs a new member since Pat Berkeley just resigned to become.
We can't, I, Jeff, from the one committee, get.
So, yeah, so if you need something to do, we need personnel over there.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware of that. I'm sure our City Recorder Kathy Payne, if you don't get selected for the budget committee, can let you know of other opportunities.
Well, awesome, okay. And I also wanted to make that clear to Mark. I know I could probably reach out to him and make sure that he knows that he can, if he, he may make it. I just wanted to let everybody know. I know Jenny knows that, that, that you can sit in on budget committee, and when it's open for public comment, you can speak then, and we have public comment before every meeting. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Nice, thank you.
Yeah, and it's usually three to four meetings, and we're budgeted out. We're done.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I watched a few of them online last week or so, so.
Yep.
Alright.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you. You're the one that watched.
Yeah. Yep, that's funny. Alright, you have, you have a good night, Jeff.
You too, thank you.
Yep.
We have four minutes, and the next interviewee is here, so.
Okay, well, let's just go ahead and jump ahead, that way we can have a ten-minute break in between our two meetings.
Okay.
We have a whole new link, too, right, that we come in on. Correct?
Uh, yes, it's a completely separate meeting, so.
Yeah, so let's go ahead and jump it forward. If he, if she wouldn't mind, Trina.
Hi, Trina, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome, and thank you for applying for budget committee, and we, we sent out a couple of questions, and we don't know if you received them, Trina, but again, thank you for applying, and Matt's gonna ask you, I'm glad you got him, because you're the second person who has, but Matt's just gonna go ahead and ask you the questions, and then allow you to respond, so go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. So Trina, the first question is just, have you introduced yourself and tell us why, or tell the city council why you would like to join the budget committee?
Um, okay, my name is Trina McKinney. I'm a wife, a mother, a union carpenter, a committee chair for PAC two fifty here in town. I've been a twenty-eight-year resident of Columbia County, and me and my husband love St. Helens so much that we actually bought property here in two thousand fifteen. Both of my children attend school here and have been involved in city sports and activities. Um, the reason why I actually was interested in joining the committee was because I'm a fiscally responsible person. The financial health of the city is very important to me. I really just wanted to be a part of that.
Great, and then the second question was just, as a budget committee, if you have any goals for joining.
Um, my goals are to share our ideas, discuss alternatives to promote economic efficiency within the, the public funds. Just the overall goal.
Great. We scheduled ten minutes for the interview. They've been going pretty fast, so each candidate has, has had a little bit of an opportunity to afterwards to just say anything else that they would like the city council to know.
Um, I pretty much stated everything about me and what I do. I do, for the union, I do build schools within the Portland metro area. A little further detail into what I do for work, and then, yeah, pretty much it.
Okay, so the city council is gonna deliberate tonight at the seven o'clock meeting. That is a public meeting, so you're welcome to log on to that meeting and watch if you would like. But if you don't, either myself or City Recorder Kathy Payne will call you tomorrow and let you know what the results are. And if you are not selected as the budget committee, either myself or Kathy will let you know of other opportunities that we do have available on other commissions if you are interested.
The library commission is gonna raise its hand real quick for extra help, and we also have the cultural commission is looking for people, too. We'll get right into you and hold up our hand.
Alright.
And Trina, it's good seeing you, and I just want, I've been letting everybody know that if you don't make it, because we have one opening, that we have public comment, and our meetings are gonna be totally open to the public to sit through and watch, but we also have public comment before every meeting, too, so in our budget committee, so. Alright.
Alright, sounds great.
Alright, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so with that, council, we have a whole nother get out of here and re-log in for our regular session at seven, so I will call a special session to order. We'll see you on the other side at seven.
To order or to adjourn?
Uh, to adjourn, excuse me. Yes, you're right. You, you got me. Yes, you're right. You you got me. That was good. Right, you were paying attention. I was just making sure you were paying attention, Councillor Topaz.
Look, I had enough of getting this computer to turn on. We're gonna do everything we can to keep it going.
All right, so you're gonna have to actually log, go out of this, Councillor Topaz, and uh you got another um identity on that other for the next meeting, okay?
Yep.